Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 9th, 2025 special meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Harris, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Dyssard?
Here.
Dr. Lamouine?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number two is the superintendent's evaluation. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Mr. Long?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Campbell. If there are no further questions or comments, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, at this time, we will go into executive session.
Do we want to put this prison in this town? God's a town.
Do we have a motion to go into regular session?
I'll make a motion that we go into open session at this time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Dyssard. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Campbell, all in favor of going back into regular session, signify by sayin' aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so at this time, we have completed the annual superintendent's evaluation, using our superintendent's evaluation documents as we do each year. And Ms. Voeche, we want to congratulate you on a wonderful evaluation. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication, and we will file this, as we do each year, and have this recorded appropriately. So again, we want to thank you, Ms. Voeche. And at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris, all in favor, signify by sayin' aye.
Aye.
Okay, the special meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 9th, 2025 general committee meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Creason, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Dyssard?
Here.
Dr. Lamouine?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamouine, if I could take a point of privilege at this time?
Yes.
I would like to recognize and take a point of privilege to recognize Mr. Mike Gennart and take a moment of silence for Mike. And before we do so, just to say that, you know, we extend our heartfelt sympathies to Alice and to his family. Mike was a former employee. He taught at Chalmette High before he became an attorney. And he, not only did he love his community, he loved the school system and showed his support for Chalmette High and all of the school system through his actions and through his generosity, but through his heart. And so I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mike Gennart and his family. Thank you.
And I would just like to make a comment. And he actually spent a while teaching at St. Bernard High, and while he was going to law school at night. But the Mike Gennart I remember as a young teenager, because I taught him in high school, he was just ferocious on the football and basketball, football field, basketball court. And we used to have to talk with him about, don't put that ferocious face on, you won't get so many technical fouls when you're playing basketball. But a great, great young man. And as, as an adult, he was really one of the finest men, I feel, on the face of the earth. He did more good works for people that no one ever knew about. If we had an employee or we had someone who didn't have the means and had an issue or problem, I could pick up the phone and call Mike, and he would help them and take care of them, and no one would ever know. So that's the true, I think, mark of a Christian and a wonderful man. And like I said, my condolences to Alice, his wife, and Johnny and Jane, his childrens.
Voeche, thank you, Ms. Voeche, and thank you, Ms. Dyssard. As you said, Mike has left a lasting legacy as a leader and an exceptional man in St. Bernard Parish. And we will continue to remember all of the kind works that he did in our schools and throughout our community. And again, our deepest condolences go out to the Gennart family. Thank you. And I believe at this time, Mr. Warner wanted to take a point of privilege as well.
Oh, okay, yeah. I also have a point of privilege. I'd like to congratulate Coach Butch Stockton. Coach Stockton has gotten his 800th win as a basketball coach at Chalmette High. Puts him in very elite company in the state of Louisiana, and it deserves congratulations. So I wanted to congratulate Coach Stockton and thank y'all for letting me have my point of privilege.
And he also coached at St. Bernard High before this summer.
And if I could add to that about Coach Butch Stockton, you know, he's a fine man, very fine man. And I know he's been a wonderful mentor to so many of our students, and has followed many of them, even after, you know, their high school years. And again, he's just a great guy. We're fortunate to have, to have him, yes. And congratulations to him. That's quite a feat.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyssard. Okay, agenda item number two is an education item. Ms. White?
Yes, 2.1 on the agenda is the Head Start program update.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here just to provide an update on our Head Start program. The first packet that you see will be our program information report. This is just a snapshot of our 2024-2025 school year. It's one full grant year, and we're required to report this to Head Start at the end of every grant year, just to give them information on what took place during that year. So you'll see the first section is about enrollment. So the first section is all about our students. And so they would like to know how many students we had walk through our door. We are funded for 112 Head Start students. We did have some drops throughout the year, some moves, so we were able to serve 118 Head Start students throughout the year, last year. And then under that, you'll see how they became eligible for the program. The majority of the students did receive public assistance, which is an automatic qualifier for the program. And all of those students did receive SNAP benefits, so we were able to secure the majority of them using public assistance. The other students were either at or below the poverty line, and we were able also to take some that are over the poverty line if they qualified for special education services. The next few pages of that section just ask if we had any kids leave during the school year, which we had six leave, so that's why we had the 118. Did we have any students who had absent or tardy issues? So we are able to address that with families as well. We did have five of those students. We kept them enrolled throughout the program, and our family service worker worked with those parents and sees if we need to get them on the bus, or if there's a childcare center in their area that they're able to bring them to in the morning and jump on the bus there. So we try and work with them so that way they can come to school every day and be prepared and get them ready for kindergarten. And then Head Start also wants to know the race, ethnicity, and the primary language of our families at home as well. And then starting on page six is about our Head Start staff. We have our seven classrooms that have seven certified teachers in there, and then seven paraprofessionals as well. So they just ask how many of those are in the classrooms, what types of degrees do they have, and also if any of our parents are in school or are working on an associate's degree. And then we also let them know our ethnicity, race, and language of our staff as well. We did have staff turnover at the end of the previous year. Some had retirements, people moved for jobs. So we let them know we did have five staff leave, and they were replaced at the beginning of the school year as well. Starting on page 11, this is the child and health services section. So Head Start does require our nurse to keep track of all of the health needs of our students, and that is if they have health insurance. If not, she works with the families to get them signed up for health insurance, if they're able to get that. Head Start does require all of our students to see a doctor and a dentist as well within the first 90 days of school. So our nurse tries really hard to get that taken care of. She comes in over the summer, gets those letters out early, and then just sends reminders throughout the year to the parents for that. We also offer a health fair. In January, we'll be our health fair this year. And we have community members come, so parents can also see what's offered in the community for them to sign up for doctors and dental needs as well. We let Head Start know about our disability services, how many kids were referred. So we referred 15 students last year for special education services. And then we did have 14 students who entered our program with an IEP already. So we are required to have 10% of our students with an IEP in the program, so we did meet that last year with the 14. And then just after that, as a breakdown of those disabilities by student, we let them know that we do a developmental screening when the students enter the classroom. So we do the Denver on all of our kids as soon as they enter. And then throughout the year, our teachers use portfolio assessments. We have TS Gold, and we use the State Standards Child Checklist as well. For the curriculum, we use creative curriculum. And then we're also required to have a parenting curriculum. So we have Scholastics Engaging Families in Children's Literacy and Development. And so our family service worker and education specialists hold six sessions, starting in about September, October, with our parents once a month, and have them come in. They go get the kids from the classroom, and they do activities to help promote literacy at home and outside in the environment. Our teachers also use the classroom assessment scoring system. That's how they are observed. And then the next section is about family and community partnerships. We let them know how many families we had, what the makeup of those families were, whether they were single families, two-parent families, if they were being raised by parents or grandparents or in foster care. And then also the education of those parents. Did they graduate high school? Do they have GEDs? Are they currently in schooling right now? So we report all that to Head Start. And then we also have a survey that we send out, asking parents, what types of things are they interested in learning about, whether it's going back to school, whether it's money management, substance abuse treatment. So based on that, we will have workshops, or we'll get them in contact with the right people to help them further that education along. So you'll see that under family services, and how many parents ask for those services. Then on page 17, at the bottom, is the South Father Engagement. Head Start's really pushing, getting fathers involved. So we tried to have an activity for our fathers to come spend the day with their kids at school. We played games. They were able to have snacks, go outside on the playground. This year, we did a game night. It was a huge success. They came in, we had games set up, and they played games all night with their child in cafeteria at Davies'. And then if we serviced any homeless students and students in foster care, that's also in there. And then the last page, page 19 and 20, is just our grant level questions. Wanting to know about our management staff, how many people on the management staff. That includes myself, my education specialist, my family service worker, and the school nurse as well. And so that was the last section of that. And so this is due in about August, after the completion of the school year. And then once that's turned in, usually our training and technical assistants will give us a call. We'll get together, they'll discuss it and see if there's any areas that we felt that we lacked in, or we want to make stronger, and we'll set some goals for the year. So with the government shutdown, our call was kind of pushed back. So we just got word that they're back working, and we had that meeting set up for, after the holidays. So we'll work on that. And then the last two documents are just our data from last school year and this school year so far. So the first one is just our spring data, and it's just, at the bottom, you could see the chart that shows all of our student growth and all of the domains in Teaching Childies Gold. Our biggest growth was in mathematics and social-emotional development. Our goal is to have 80% of our kids on level entering kindergarten. So we met that in all areas, but we could see that we're just barely making it in mathematics and cognitive development. So we continue to keep math a big focus for this school year on our SLTs, also language as well. And then we're using cognitive development as another goal first this year. And then the last one is just, we just did checkpoints in October. It's our first fall assessment. And the numbers we've seen pretty much match what the students came in last year with. So we know we are going to be on the right track with keeping those same goals for math and literacy this year as well. And that is everything so far.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Ms. Harris?
What can we do as a board to help you all identify more diverse language support for students? I noticed that we have a number of students who speak, in particular, in their home, a different language. What can we do? How can we help you all get more language services and focus on speaking native language?
So the school system now has school status, which is the communication system between our teachers and our families. And that has just been tremendous, because they can text back and forth, and it translates it right to the parent in their native language. They type it back in Spanish, and we can translate it back to English. So that's been the number one help, especially for our teachers. Even during like parent-teacher conferences, like they still use it even though they're right there. So that's been a huge help. Ms. Seabird, anytime we have something, she's like, let me know. She'll send a translator. So like, we just had our last policy council meeting. She sent a translator over for anyone who wasn't able to understand, you know, me speaking English. And then the translator also stayed, because we did have a parent workshop after for GED and setting up services for that. So the translator also stayed and helped those families talk to the Nunez representative and get that set up. So I think so far, we're good. Like I said, Ms. Seabird gave us an iPad for registration. We talked back and forth on the iPad. If we know a day that we do have a variety of languages, like I said, she'll send someone over and sit with us at registration as well. So, yes, I think you guys are helping us a lot right now.
Anyone else?
Let me just piggyback on that for a minute. And as we're talking to the public out there, we are always looking for people who are fluent in other languages. So if you're fluent in Spanish or Portuguese, or what are the top Vietnamese?
Yes, Spanish and Portuguese, I think, are two.
Are our two highest ones. And you're looking for employment, part-time or full-time. Please come see us, because there are many ways in which you can help us and service our children within the community. So if you are fluent in Spanish or Portuguese, we'd love to have a conversation with you. So please come in to our personnel office, and we would be happy to speak with you.
Thank you. Diana?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I just want to say, we're very blessed and fortunate to have the Head Start program here in St. Bernard Parish. And we do serve a lot of students, and it's wonderful. So thank you for your great job and all the staff members at Head Start. I did have one question about the students that we lost. Was it due to the fact that they moved?
Yes.
Out of the area?
Yes, yes. We did have some people move. A lot of movement usually happens after the holidays, after Christmas time, move to other states. And then we just have kids who wind up registering after the holiday as well. So we were able to fill those spots quickly.
Great.
Because we do have a 30-day window to fill any vacant spots with Head Start. So, yes.
And it's great to see that those spots are being filled.
Yes.
To the advantage of those students who are able to enroll.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Selinger, for your work in giving this report, Head Start Program Update. And this is a very important program. Like Mrs. Dyssard mentioned, I think it covers about a fourth of our Head Start, of our four-year-old program. Have you received any word or heard anything from the Department of Education, from the Federal Department of Education? I know there was some talk about, you know, dismantling the whole department, but they can continue with this program?
Yes, even through the government shutdown, like we've received emails weekly from them, letting us know, like, Head Start was still a go, don't worry about anything. So they were very good about keeping us up to date and making sure that we were okay. We had like an alternative person to contact in case we needed to, because our typical people were on the break. And like I said, we got the message maybe two weeks ago that they're back, and that we should be rolling just as normal. So.
Yeah, it's a very important program, too.
Yes, yes.
It would be a big hole in our budget if we couldn't fund it, too.
Yes, if they took it, yes, definitely.
Yeah, anything out there in the wind, you hear anything, let us know.
Definitely, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And to Mr. Warner's point, we fund about a fourth of our four-year-olds through Head Start. We also fund through the Education Excellence Fund and through the HE funds. And with the constitutional amendment that will be voted upon now in May, since that election was pushed back until May, over the changes where they're going to take, if this passes, the fund balances, the $2 million, that's $2 billion that are in these funds, and put them toward the unfunded accrued liability. And we will no longer, if that passes, our teachers will realize a pay increase, but we will no longer have the funding for at least two of our four-year-old classes. Now, we've been told by the, some of the legislators that they intend to make up those amounts of money with an early childhood appropriation, but that's going to be iffy from year to year. So I think when we get closer to the session, and we have discussions with our legislators, we have to remind them of this and ask them to support the initiatives to replace the funding from those two sources so that we can help continue the quality that we have and the number of students that we serve in our four-year-old program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have to send this to the board? Make a motion?
No, this is just information.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 3.1, our personnel changes for December 2025. And we have Ms. Albers with us this evening.
Hi, good evening, board. In your folders, you will see our minutes, the minutes from the last board meeting, and updates from Personnel Department.
Okay, and this is a very short list, which is a good sign. Any questions for Ms. Albers?
Thank you.
Yes, as always, we thank you for all of your hard work recruiting great teachers for our school system. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it, everyone.
Okay, agenda item number four is a finance committee item. Mr. Warner, will you chair this item for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, item 4, 4.1, is a consideration of recommendation for telecommunications and bundling Internet services. Hello?
And well, just, this is Ms. Perkel, Colleen Perkel, and she is a member of our staff who works primarily now as a systems analyst in our Computer Science Department. And she has been working on this initiative, and it's her first time presenting to the board. So we all need to be kind.
Yeah.
As we always are.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. So, in your packet, you have the tabulations of the proposals that we received from the RFP that we put out for our telecommunications services, which includes our Internet and phones at all of the schools and other locations. Our current contract will be expiring June 30th, 2026, and these proposals are for the next cycle, which is a three-year period that starts July 1st, 2026, with two optional 12-month renewals for a max of five years. We publicly advertise this RFP in the St. Bernard Voice on our website, our online billing, online bidding platform, as well as on the FCC's E-Rate website. And we only received two responses from Cox Communications and from AT&amp;T Business. So on page two is the pricing breakdown of the two proposals. For, only for the Internet, Cox Communications was about $7,500 cheaper than AT&amp;T. And then AT&amp;T did not submit pricing on telephone service, so we were not able to compare that price. But at the bottom, we have the annual cost of the $29,811, specifically looking at Cox Communications. And that is our 10% of the total cost, because E-Rate covers 90% of our Internet and telephone service here. So that's only what we would pay. Compared to our last contract, this cost is going to come up a little bit, because we asked for a slightly different configuration to our network that would give our district more network resiliency. So as of right now, central office is the only in and out for our Internet. So if something happens here, whether it be hardware failure, power, power failure, somebody hits a pole outside, we lose Internet access across the entire district. So with the new proposal, this is going to add a second Internet connection at Chalmette High School. And we are going to balance all of the Internet between the two sites. So if something happens to one, everything can go out of the other and vice versa. On page three, you have the evaluation form, where we had a committee of three people evaluate both proposals and score them with a maximum of 300 points, 100 per person. And we scored Cox with a 300 out of 300. Their proposal was absolutely fantastic. But AT&amp;T scored a 237 out of the 300 points. They, again, did not provide telephone pricing. They didn't provide a few other things that we asked for, and that's all in that sheet. Overall, we believe that Cox Communications, their proposal is the best option. We have a good, a good relationship with Cox. We've had them for many years, and we recommend going with their proposal. And we have to get this contract in place for when we apply for the new round of E-Rate, which will be at the beginning of this next calendar year.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Mrs. Harris?
So I just noticed something, and I'm not sure if you can answer it, but I'm sure you can. The difference in bandwidth between the middle schools. I know Trist has the highest population, but AJ has the highest bandwidth. What's the difference in that? Do we know why?
I'm going to go with it's probably a typo. I'm going to go with it's probably a type phone. So all of our, all of our middle schools have the same amount of bandwidth? Yes, I probably typed that one wrong.
Okay. I was just asking. I didn't know if there was something like different in configuration at the school or...
No. Most of the elementaries have the same, with the exception of Davies. All of the middle schools have the same, and then Chalmette High is bigger. Thank you.
Ms. Creason?
Excellent job presenting.
Thank you.
What is our current annual cost? I know you said it's only going up a little bit.
Yes. Current annual is $19,000, roughly $19,000.
Okay, so around $10,000.
Yes.
Okay. I can make a motion that we accept the recommendation to award the contract to Cox Business and send it to the board.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mrs. White. Are there any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, I'll take Item Number Five, An Update on Safety Protocols. Well, hello, Mrs. Lichardi, how are you today?
Wonderful, thank you.
Great.
Okay, so I wanted to provide a little update on our continued efforts to strengthen our school's safety through the district. As you know, I previously presented on Evolve, and I'm pleased to let you know that we're moving forward with implementation at three middle schools. The units have already been delivered at each campus, and our teams are in the process of preparing for installation and operational setup. We plan to begin using the Evolve system in January when the students return. This timeline will ensure that our staff has opportunity to be fully trained, and all procedures are in place for a smooth transition when the students come back. Parents and guardians will be notified about this implementation when we go out on break. This next phase aligns with what we're already doing at Chalmette High School. That's it.
All right. Anybody has any question from the Board? Mrs. Deisart?
Did you, you said that we'll have full access starting in January?
In January.
So the students...
For the three middle schools, we'll have three units each at each middle school, and they're setting them up. They're already arrived. We're getting them set up during the holiday, and then when the kids come back in January, we're ready to roll.
Great. And everybody's been in-service on that?
They'll be trained again January 5th, and the parents will be notified before the break.
Great. Thank you.
So now we'll have the system at Chalmette High. We have detectors at Raleigh, and now all three middle schools. So we're moving forward with this.
Just as a question, we, I know you said we're going to be notifying the parents, but are we also going to be talking to the students? Because I know that there are some, there have been some issues with Chalmette High, like the system picking up things that are not an issue, you know, like certain-sized binders or like how to put... So in order to ensure a smooth transition, will we be having conversations with the students about, you know, how they should proceed when they return to school so we don't have a gridlock?
Yes. So the, I've met with the middle school principals already, and we talked about a smoother implementation process where they're going to talk to their kids ahead of time. We're actually planning on rolling out not the first day the kids come back, but the day after, and that way, that next day, when they come back, they can say, okay, now tomorrow you're doing this, and they can talk to them about everything, too.
Yeah.
We're also going to have some flyers posted up saying things that will trigger it.
Okay.
And Chalmette High is going to also tweak some things as well to hopefully expedite the process.
Yeah, because I know my daughter's at Chalmette High, and she had to learn, like, how to put stuff in...
Which binder set off?
Yeah, like a certain-sized binder will trigger it, or like how she packs things in her backpack, like she's checking her backpack before she gets out the car, just to make sure that... So I know the lineage at Chalmette High can get pretty long, so I think it's good to have a conversation with the students as well about how to manage that moving forward.
Yes. And there's some things we worked out at Chalmette High before we started this, and like Ms. Creason said, the binder placement definitely plays a role. Like if you have four binders back-to-back, it'll set it off because it looks like apparel, you know? So the kids are learning how to put their binders or take it out and walk out with it, things like that.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Lichardi? Sure. Dr. Lamoy?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you, Ms. Lichardi, and all of the Maintenance and Facility staff, all of our school leaders and staff members who have helped to not only roll out the implementation, but as Ms. Creason suggested, help to improve so that now as we cascade this to the middle schools, it's a streamlined process. So thank you for your leadership and for everyone's efforts with making sure that our schools are safe and secure.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you for your update. Appreciate it. Tossing it back to Dr. Lamoy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. Agenda Item Number Six are Superintendent's Notes. Ms. Vouchet?
We're just going in a few minutes at the actual meeting. We will ask you then to adopt a resolution for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held on November the 15th for the renewal of the special maintenance tax. So we will do that in a few minutes at the regular meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, regular monthly board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Ms. White, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in his name.
Roll call, please, Ms. Vouchet.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Deisart?
Here.
Dr. Lamoy?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number 2.1 is a Communications Update Super News, and we have Ms. Felt with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, school board members, and happy holidays. All right, so in front of you, you've got my communications update packet for the month of December. There's been a lot of press releases that I've pushed out throughout the month, so make sure you flip through that. I've done them in quick succession. We've had a lot of good things happening. In the back of the packet is also analytics updates for our website, how much, how many visits we're getting on there, as well as our social media posts, engagements, what they're looking at the most, what they're interacting with the most, clicking, liking, and commenting. And then for our Super News feature tonight, we've got a little special feature on our Students of the Year. So enough from me. Please enjoy our December edition of Super News. From the desk of the Superintendent's Office, it's time for Super News. On today's very special edition of Super News, we're proud to introduce you to 11 remarkable young people. These students exemplify the very best of our schools through their achievements in the classroom, their leadership, and their character each and every day. It's time to meet our Students of the Year.
Kind qualities they see in me is my leadership, because every time in group projects, I'm always leading them to get the right answer and also listening to all their opinions to make one big opinion.
They saw that I was compassionate and that I'm really hardworking to get where I need to go.
I think they saw my leadership because I am president of many clubs, I am president of 4-H, I can, and I still maintain good grades.
I'm helpful, I'm a leader, I'm a good friend. I help other people when they need it.
So some qualities that they see in me is being helpful because I usually help my teachers and help everybody else, and also I love sharing my snacks with others.
I am in a lot of different clubs, and I enjoy helping and serving in my community.
I think the reason why they chose me is my diversity and ability to have multifaceted areas. I'm not just a football player or a member of the library club. There's several different groups and several different clubs and organizations I'm a part of.
My favorite subject is math because I like solving problems.
My favorite subject is math because I like how there's always one answer that I can determine, and I know if I'm right, I'm right, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I can fix it. And you can also kind of know what to fix if you get it wrong. You just look at the formula and say, oh, I did this. I put a three instead of a two.
My favorite subject is math because I love learning about numbers and how to apply it into real-life problems, like at the grocery store when you're buying something, and you don't know the price of your full cart, so you have to add them all up together plus tax, and that's math for you. And you have to do it carefully so you know your actual price, so you're not spending a little bit too much money, and you don't want that. You want your actual amount so you don't have to overpay, because nobody wants that.
My favorite subject is science because I love doing the experiments.
Interesting question. I think I'm going to have to go with AP Psychology. Ms. Janik is an amazing teacher. She teaches AP Psychology at Chalmette, and it kind of gave me a different point of view on how I view education and the education system itself, from how we process things and think about things in a certain mind frame.
My favorite subject is ELA, and it's because of my ELA teacher, Mr. Vizay. He's done a very great job at breaking down every single subject that ELA has, and I understand it fully, and he's really made me fall in love with ELA.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Hines because she allows me in our class to express herself, and she is, she is fun and really nice.
My fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Powell, because she was so uplifting and kind to all the students in her class.
My favorite teacher is probably Ms. Frazier because she pushed me really hard, and that caused me to get an advanced in my LEAP score.
Ms. Blar was one of my teachers my sophomore year, and he's just left an impact on me unlike any other teacher. He's more than just a teacher, he's a mentor, and he influenced me not just as a student, but as a person.
My favorite teacher I've ever had is probably Ms. Field, my third-grade teacher, because she made me feel like I could do anything I wanted to do and was so encouraging in her teaching.
My second-grade teacher, Ms. Randall, she always had a way of explaining things to me that maybe I didn't understand, and she would explain it in a way that I could understand it. She also helped me to fit into Davies because that was my first year in the St. Bernard Parish school system. So she really helped me fit in and meet everyone.
I want to be a professional athlete because I always dreamt about being that guy on TV and hitting a home run ball in the World Series, or just scoring the last touchdown in a Super Bowl.
I would want to be a teacher because my mom was a teacher, and she inspired me because every holiday she would decorate, and she would dress up, and it looked fun.
I want to be a coding engineer because I read online they can help the community by creating an app that can show volunteers, like places in need that need help.
I want to be an art teacher when I grow up because I love expressing my feelings in art. I'm in art club at school, and I love doing it. So, yeah.
I want to be an architect when I grow up because, because since math is my favorite subject, I can apply that to my architect, which my architecture I can do in the future because you're going to need math to make houses for people and design.
I want to be an entrepreneur because I want to build my own empire and work for myself.
I want to be an emergency physician because I want to help people and also because I don't want to focus, I love the science behind it, but I also don't just want to focus on one part of the body. I want to focus on the whole part.
My most important extracurricular is League of Angels and Exceptional Athletes. League of Angels has played a really big role in my life. My cousin Bryn, who has Down Syndrome, has really impacted me and shown me a different way of viewing things, and it gives me a chance to reach out to the special needs community and make influence on them directly and give a little joy and happiness to them every now and then.
Soccer, football, basketball, and baseball.
I'm involved in many different activities such as Beta, 4-H, Driven, and I also enjoy doing softball, and I enjoy acting outside of school.
My favorite things to do are, I play baseball outside of school. I play for St. Bernard Savage. It's a travel ball team. I've played since 10U. Now we're in 13U. And then another thing I really like to do outside of school is academic games. We, I've been to Nationals four times. That's always a great experience. It's so fun.
I would give Future Student of the Year the advice to be involved, enjoy your time, do activities to be involved, and be yourself.
Some advice I would give to that student is mostly work on your essays, because instead of the year, you will most, they will most likely want you to write an essay about yourself. And I would also want you to be kind to others so you could be one of the nominees.
Always be yourself. If you show your true colors and show that you're always willing to be that better person in life, then you will probably be picked for Student of the Year.
The advice that I would give to other students is to not be nervous and just do what you have to do and have fun during it.
I would just say be yourself and don't stress, it's really fun.
One word that describes me is respectful because every single day I go to school inside and outside with good manners.
One word that best describes me is I'm a leader.
One word to describe me is intelligent because a lot of my teachers told me that I'm a smart student and I maintain good grades.
One word that best describes me is goofy.
I find one word that describes me is thoughtful because I think of it other people's actions and thoughts and try and help them in their path.
The best word that describes me is resilience. I've always found a way to put my right foot forward and keep going no matter what was in my way. It doesn't matter if it was some little thing as being punished or some big thing as someone dying. I've always found a way to keep going, and it really made me to the person I am today.
Well-rounded. I think my involvement in several different clubs and different athletic programs, it really showcases what I can do in multiple different areas of my life, as a student, as an athlete, as a volunteer, as a leader, and I think well-rounded is the best way to describe me.
We extend our heartfelt congratulations to our three district-wide students, Bentley Hume, Grace Dewey, and Jackson Nunez, the top students representing our elementary, middle, and high school divisions. We are extremely proud of you and know you will represent St. Bernard Parish with excellence. We also want to thank the dedicated teachers who guide and support these students daily. Your work makes all the difference. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you next time on Super News, where we always let the Super News roll.
And to, thanks to Jack and Steve for a wonderful edition of Super News spotlighting our outstanding Students of the Year. So heartwarming to see their interviews, and we want to share our heartfelt congratulations with all of our Student of the Years and our district-wide Students of the Year. And I also want to give Ms. Felt a kudos for organizing all of the Student of the Year and Teacher of the Year process. It's a tremendous amount of work to make sure that all of that is aligned with the Department of Ed requirements, and so thank you for making that such a smooth and positive process for everyone involved.
Thank you. Happy to do it. We've got an incredible group of students.
Questions or comments from Ms. Felt? Ms. Deisart?
I, too, would just like to congratulate all the Students of the Year. As you said, Ms. Lamoy, the process was quite extensive, and it's just wonderful to see how many wonderful, great students we have. And every year, watching the Students of the Year and, you know, how they speak and present themselves is just amazing. And we have some really great kids, and again, each school had so many nominees, so the ones who won, I want to congratulate to them and all, excuse me, also to the other children who were also nominated. We have some great kids, and they represent St. Bernard Parish so well, and just so proud...
We have some great kids, and they represent St. Bernard Parish so well, and just so proud of them, and congratulations to their parents and also to all the teachers who, who had a part in, you know, educating them. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members? Oh, I'm sorry.
While Ms. Velt is still up here, um, on Sunday, we had the Nutcracker Tea, which was a really tremendous success. I don't know if you saw any of the pictures on Facebook, and Ms. Corolla, Carla Corolla, spearheaded that event for our employees Lions Club, who sponsored it. But the reason I'm saying it right now is, Ms. Velt, I don't know if y'all have known, has written a children's book, which is just a beautifully written book, um, I'm not giving a plug, but I know she's selling it on Amazon as well, but what she did was read it as part of the, you know, the program, read it to the kids, and she's been doing a lot of that around with our children. So I just wanted to congratulate her as an author, as well as one of our employees. She's been a tremendous student.
Thank you. I really, I enjoyed, I think that we had a really good variety of the Nutcracker Tea, just to add to that. We had ballerina performances, and there were songs performed by students and teachers. I read there were band performances. I just thought it was, it was a lovely day, both the 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM performances.
And so a lot of our little ones just saw our students performing for them, as well as some of their teachers, but it was great to see our middle school kids, our high school kids coming in and performing for the little ones as well.
It was an awesome day.
Ms. Isar.
What's the name of your book?
Oh, it's called Camille's Christmas Wish, It's a Sweet Southern Tale. It's about a little girl who wishes for snow on Christmas, but learns about the magic of a Louisiana Christmas along the way.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Excellent description.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? And I just want to add, um, you know, the Nutcracker Tea, again, all of the proceeds from that benefit, our Lions Club, and so that's a fundraiser that's spearheaded by the members of the Lions Club and Ms. Carla Corolla, and we want to thank all of our school administrators and staff members who helped to make that such a success, so truly a labor of love. And with that, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number three point one is the approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of November eighteenth, 2025, as published on December fifth, 2025.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Long. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, agenda item number four point one are personnel changes for December twenty twenty five, and again, this is a very short list, it is for information only. Okay, any questions or comments? We'll move right along. Okay, agenda item number five point one is the approval of the recommendation for telecommunications and bundled internet services, and there was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, agenda item number five point two is to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025, to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein. Okay, and I will read this into the minutes to begin. Okay, um, the following resolution was offered, a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025, to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein. Be it resolved by the Parish School Board of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the governing authority, acting as the governing authority of school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the district, that section one, canvas. This governing authority does now proceed in open and public session to examine the official tabulations of votes cast at the special election held in school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025, the election, to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein pursuant to the following proposition. The proposition, millage renewal, shall school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the district, continue to levy a tax of five point five mils on all property subject to taxation in the district, an estimated two million eight hundred and thirty seven thousand six hundred dollars reasonably expected at this time to be collected from the levy of the tax for an entire year, for a period of ten years, beginning with the year twenty twenty seven and ending with the year twenty thirty six, for the purpose of renovating, improving, maintaining, equipping, furnishing, and/or repairing schools and school-related facilities of the Parish of St. Bernard School Board. This governing authority does further proceed to examine and canvas the returns of the election thereof. Section two, election results. According to the official certified tabulation of votes cast in said election, there was a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy one votes cast in favor of the proposition, and a total of four hundred and forty one votes cast against the proposition, resulting in a majority of one thousand three hundred and thirty voters cast in favor of the proposition. The proposition was therefore duly carried by a majority of the votes cast by the qualified electors voting in that election. Section three, promulgation of election results. The results of said election shall be promulgated by publication in the manner provided by law after receipt from the Secretary of State's office of the actual cost of the election as required by section eighteen, colon, twelve ninety two of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of nineteen fifty as amended. Section four, declaration. The foregoing results of the election are hereby declared by this governing authority and shall be published as required by law. Section five, process verbal. A process verbal of the canvas of the returns of the election shall be made, and a certified copy thereof shall be forwarded to the Secretary of State, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, who shall record the same in her office. Another certified copy thereof shall be forwarded to the clerk of court and ex officia recorder of mortgages in and for the Parish of St. Bernard, who shall record the same in the mortgage of said parish, and another copy thereof shall be retained in the archives of this governing authority. This resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was follows. And this will be a roll call vote?
Yes, and we need a motion.
Okay, um, is there a motion for the roll call vote?
Uh, also moved.
Okay, motion on the floor by Ms. Isar, seconded by Mr. Warner.
And I'd like to just say one thing, I, um, I just want to thank the public for their vote of confidence and their vote of, um, supporting public education and, um, to renew this special tax. We appreciate it, and it'll allow us to continue to keep our schools, um, looking great and, and keep up the maintenance of them. So thank you to all the voters at St. Bernard Parish, we appreciate it. And one of the things that you just heard earlier today or this evening that helps fund, this tax helps fund, for example, all the weapon detector systems and stuff that we have been putting in the school. So without these, these funds, if we wanted to do those things, we would have had to impact instruction of children and pull it out of our general fund. This tax allows us to keep our buildings clean and safe and secure for our children and our employees. So we do want to thank the people of St. Bernard for showing that confidence in us.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so at this time, we will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Campbell.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yay.
Ms. Creson.
Yay.
Mr. Long.
Yay.
Ms. Isar.
Yes.
Dr. Lemoine.
Yay.
Ms. Rodney.
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yay.
Mr. Warner.
Yay.
And Ms. White.
Yay.
And Ms. Lee Bowman is showing absent.
Okay. Okay, uh, the resolution. The process verbal of the canvas of the votes cast at the special election held in school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025. Be it known and remembered that on Tuesday, December ninth, 2025, at six thirty PM at its regular meeting place, the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, two hundred East St. Bernard Highway, Chalmette, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the governing authority, acting as the governing authority of the school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the district, and being the, the authority ordering the special election held therein on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025, with a quorum of the governing authority present did in open and public session examine the official certified tabulation of votes cast at the said election, and did examine and canvas the returns of the said election. There having been submitted at said election the following proposition to which? The proposition, millage renewal. Shall school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, the district, continue to levy a tax of five point five mils on all property subject to taxation in the district, an estimated two million eight hundred and thirty seven thousand six hundred dollars reasonably expected at this time to be collected from the levy of the tax for an entire year, for a period of ten years, beginning with the year twenty twenty seven and ending with the year twenty thirty six, for the purpose of renovating, improving, maintaining, equipping, furnishing, and/or repairing schools and school-related facilities of the St. Bernard Parish School Board. There was found by said count and canvas that there was a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy one votes cast in favor of the proposition, and a total of four hundred and forty one votes cast against the proposition, as here and above set forth, and it was further found and determined that there was a majority of one thousand three hundred and thirty votes cast in favor of the proposition, as here and above set forth. Therefore, the governing authority did declare and proclaim, and does hereby declare and proclaim in open and public session, that the proposition, as here and above, set forth, was duly carried by a majority of the votes cast by the qualified electors voting at the said special election held in the district on Saturday, November fifteenth, 2025. Results by precinct are available from the Secretary of this governing authority through regular business hours or via the Louisiana Secretary of State's website, thevoterportal.sos.la.gov. Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this process verbal is a copy of the notice of special election and proof of publication thereof, thus done and signed at Chalmette, Louisiana, on this, the ninth day of December, 2025. Is there a separate motion? Yes, is there a motion to, do we want to do a roll call vote for this as well?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution.
Okay.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor and a second for a roll call vote.
Mr. Campbell.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yay.
Ms. Creson.
Yay.
Mr. Long.
Yay.
Ms. Isar.
Yay.
Dr. Lemoine.
Yay.
Ms. Rodney.
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yay.
Mr. Warner.
Yay.
Ms. White.
Yay.
And Ms. Lee Bowman is absent.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Okay, agenda item number six point one are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. And again, we have time before the next meeting to do so. Okay, agenda item number seven are superintendent's notes, Ms. Vouchet.
Just, um, again, reiterating what a wonderful event the Nutcracker Tea was, and this was the second year of our Lions Club doing it, and, uh, you know, from the feedback and what I've seen on social media, it was really a wonderful event. The Christmas show, the annual Christmas show at Chalmette High School is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week. If you have not yet gotten your tickets, that'll be a very nice event to attend as well. And for our other schools, we have many of the holiday celebrations, so please check your school's website or newsletter, um, if you're interested in attending any of those as well. And just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Um, Ms. Harris? Ms. Vouchet, when is the administrator?
Friday.
Friday. All right, uh, and again, as Ms. Vouchet says, we just want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday on behalf of the board. Okay, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you and good night.